It's time to do business. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Business Morning. I'm Ini John Mekwa. Less than fifty-five minutes of business. We start from the global space. As usual, oil prices rose for a second day on Tuesday as the United States imposed fresh sanctions on Middle Eastern producer Iran. That increased some concerns that supply might tighten. Brent we see for this morning is thirty-eight cents in the red. That is about fifty-one percent, zero point five one percent, beg your pardon, while WTI is zero point six one percent up. So we see these new sanctions driving prices. Seventy-one dollars thirteen cents is what we have there. And of course, it's all emanating from the United States because the U.S. on Monday had put new sanctions on more than thirty brokers, tanker operators, shipping companies for their role in transporting Iranian oil president. And Adona Oil has said that he wants to bring Iran's crude oil exports to zero. Iran is the third largest producer in the organization of the petroleum exporting countries, pumping three point two million barrels per day in January. And that's according to surveys. But gains were capped by the uncertain demand outlook. Still staying in the oil space, the Independent Petroleum Market Association of Nigeria has issued a seven-day ultimatum to Nigerian midstream and downstream petroleum regulatory authority to pay the bridging claims owed marketers amounting to one hundred billion naira or face industrial action. Bridging claims represent the costs of transporting fuel from the former pipelines and product marketing company Depu to approved zones. And that's to ensure uniform pump price across the country. The association threatens to withdraw services if the amount is not paid to them before the deadline. This move follows the NMDPRA's failure to clear the debt despite promises made forty days ago in the presence of National Security Advisor Nguuribadu. If on resolve, the situation could lead to a nationwide scarcity of premium motor spirit nationwide, which we hope will not deteriorate to that. Now, the Nigeria Data Protection Commission, the NDPC, has said that the federal government has generated twelve billion naira from promoting and enforcing data protection regulations in 2024. According to the commission's annual reports, the development marks a two-hundred-percent increase from the four billion recorded in 2021. Between 2020 and 2021, the NDPC recorded one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four from reports of organizations. While between 2023 and 2024, the figure rose to four thousand six hundred and ninety-one, indicating an increase in awareness and adherence to data protection regulations. In 2024, the commission investigated two hundred and thirteen privacy breaches, unauthorized data sharing, and noncompliance with the Nigeria Data Protection Act. The data protection sector also became a major employment generator, creating twenty-three thousand jobs in 2024. And that's up ten thousand one hundred and twenty-three in 2023. The Securities and Exchange Commission has reduced the time required for companies to secure approval to raise capital in the Nigerian capital market, cutting the process from over a year to just fourteen days. This development aims to make the capital market more efficient and better positioned to support the growth and development of the economy. According to the Director General, Dr. Emotimi Agama, the current management of SEC has streamlined approval processes to enable companies access funding more swiftly. And we hope to see this bringing more listings to the market. Nigeria remains a major trader with China at the biggest on the continent of Africa. And China says they hope to build on this for it to be more. And they plan to do that at the Canton Fair, which is scheduled to hold later on this year in China. The Lagos Chamber of Commerce and Industry has organized this strategic event that's aimed at strengthening trade and investment ties between Nigeria and China. This meeting is particularly for the one hundred and thirty-seventh Canton Fair, which is expected to host both Nigerian and Chinese diplomatic mission as well as panel discussions on trade facilitation, infrastructure development, and technology transfer.
They have now simplified their visa processes. And that is to assure you that if you start in good time, you're going to get your visa, okay? But for Nigeria, I think the first thing for us why we need to promote this Canton Fair is because we want to enhance Nigeria-China trade relations. Trade is a global thing, but it's not all trade that are good. There are trades that bring fake products into the country. But the Canton Fair does not promote fake products.
Both countries have plans to maximize the Canton platform.
Chinese and Nigerian enterprises will strengthen exchange, complement each other's advantages, expand trade lanes, and explore new areas of cooperation.
For LCCI, this is in continuation of a longstanding relationship.
We take quite a lot of Nigerians to Canton Fair for many reasons. One, for them to see how advanced China has become in a few years and to look at the opportunities for businesses between Nigeria and China. Not just to buy Nigerian, not just Nigerians buying Chinese goods, but also buying equipment to set up our factories here.
The fair opens on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, a China import and export fair complex in Gansu, China. We start from the global space for our first conversation this morning with the Chief Executive Officer of Financial Derivatives Company, Mr. Bismakroani. We see new sanctions on Iran, and that has moved the oil. We've seen zero point five one percent for Brent and zero point six one for WTI. I wonder how this will sit down into Nigeria. Mr. Bismakroani joins us for this conversation. Mr. Rwanie, good morning and welcome to the program.
Good morning, and thank you for having me this morning.
Great. We've been hearing of sanctions and tariffs, and we've seen investor sentiment swayed one way or the other because of Trump's tariff. But I don't know, did we see this Iran, sanctions on Iran, Iranian truck drivers and all? Did we see it coming? Because it is moving the global oil market at this time.
Yes, we didn't see it. But obviously, now that Israel and Gaza seem to have been sorted one way or the other, and now that Ukraine and Russia is about to have a deal, I think in the next few weeks, I think the focus now is on having Iran becoming a compliant member of the international community. But that comes with some risks. So what is happening is that the markets are actually pricing in the risk of an escalation in Iran. And that's why it's at seventy-five dollars. But generally speaking, all projections are that oil prices will come down to about seventy-two dollars a barrel. Even at that price, I think most countries will be able to get by. But if it falls below that, then it becomes difficult for the shale producers in the United States and Russia for that matter, who needs a lot of oil revenue to make up for the past. It will be difficult for them to break even. So we see oil prices struggling between the seventy to seventy-three, seventy-four dollars a barrel. If you take that into consideration, then for Nigeria, it means two things. One, it means that we need to increase our production, which we cannot do because we are OPEC, we have to be OPEC compliant. So our oil revenues will cap somewhat. But also, what the price of, well, that is the subsidies, so to speak. You know, we are buying, we are selling crude oil to Dangote at an international price but payable in naira. So what will happen is that we would see petrol prices begin to increase marginally because of other variables. But generally speaking, we see a price of petrol here in Nigeria at about almost a thousand naira, anything between nine hundred and a thousand naira over the next three months.
Yeah, so I mean, I know you did mention Nigeria there. And we know that our target in the budget is seventy-five dollars. So, and as you noted, we cannot just increase our production, even though I wonder if we have already hit our OPEC quota. So where does this leave us as a country? It might be good for consumers because it means that at the pump, the price should be lower or at least steady at where it is now. But where does it leave government funding and revenue from the budget?
The government has to be more efficient and aggressive in its collection of revenues. I think that's what, that's what the plan is. And that's why the tax reform discussions and bills are being reviewed at this point in time. Not to increase the rates, but actually to increase the efficiency of collection. One. Two, to ensure that what is collected is well deployed and is used efficiently. In other words, blocking leakages. That is easier said than done. The reality is that leakages have become endemic in the Nigerian system. So that's a major responsibility of the administration to see that, one, to talk about blocking leakages, to ensure that it is done, and to show examples of people where leakages, yeah, there were leakages and that they should be brought to account and actually prosecuted. That's part of it. But having said that, I heard you talk about the imminent strike and the threat of a strike. But the realities are in Lagos today, at least in Victoria and Iqori and the upper end of the Lagos metropolis, there's no petrol at all. So it's not just an imminent strike. It looks as if there's already a scarcity. And that has created probably a black market already, which is what we try to avoid. And that is the purpose of the Dangote refinery, to ensure that what is available at the going price. But having said that, we need to understand that at this point in time, the bridging, which is the cost of this thing, if the NMDP is owing the independent market that's one hundred billion naira and have not paid the past, so their industrial action is probably justified by the expense of the people. The people are suffering. And so something has to be done immediately. I think that's, that's the language we see here, that when, when something is done, and when there's a threat, then everybody comes to their senses and does exactly what they have to do.
Yeah, it really is sad, Mr. Rwanie, because I mean, now we have the supply, but the value chain or the chain, the distribution and logistics chain is what we're looking at. And you know, for-
Let me, let me say something. Dangote has five hundred million liters. In fact, about seven hundred million liters in storage, where it's not getting to the stations. And if it gets to its stations, Dangote cannot reach the, to have uniform pricing across the country. The institution that is charged responsibility of ensuring that there's uniform pricing is not doing it. And it's not paying those who are making sure that the petrol gets and kerosene and diesel gets across the country. So that's, that's a failure of management within the regulatory body and the NMDP itself.
Well, we do hope that something will be done about that. As you noted, it's already started on the island before it spreads to other parts of the state and the country. But there's also the fasting that's starting on Saturday, the first day of March. And we know this increases demand of fruits and vegetables, and then it affects the price. What do you see from this weekend when this fasting starts?
Again, it's not this weekend. Actually, as we speak, there is already a shortage of a lot of the fruits, mainly oranges. You've noticed a shortage in oranges. We have noticed a shortage in lettuce. We've noticed a shortage in even lemon and some of the lettuce, oranges, papaya, and many of the things that are used for breaking off fast. We've seen, one, shortage, two, price increases in these commodities. But generally speaking, when you look at prices of foods, typically during the fasting, people are supposed to eat less. But we understand that they eat more when you add what they ate in the morning or what they eat after breaking off fast. When you put the two together, it's more than the, more than the average for the three meals they were having normally. And because they eat with people, when people come to breakfast with them, every day they break the fast, there's a feast, more or less. So that adds into the mentality. And we find out that aggregate demand for food and food stuff during the harvest season, during the fasting season, actually is higher than during the normal times. But what are we seeing here? We are seeing now, today, the price of beans down by a hundred thousand, four point seven six percent in the last one month. Onions down by nine percent, about nine, up to a hundred thousand as well. And tomatoes up by thirty-three percent. Again, that's showing you what's happening because tomatoes is one of the vegetables they use during the fasting. It's up thirty-three percent to forty thousand naira in the last month alone. Peppers up as well, by fifty percent to one twenty thousand. That is huge, from sixty thousand to one twenty thousand. But rice is flat at hundred thousand. So we see the perishables. We see the fasting-sensitive commodities. And we see now, add into it, the petrol and logistic price because of this scarcity. Then we are beginning to see some of the side effects of scarcity induced, a scarcity due to seasonality, a scarcity due to fasting. So all of these things are playing into the price of, price of goods, of food. We expect that by the fifteenth of February, we would have a new inflation number based on the new methodology. And so we'll have to normalize that and see whether there is actually a trend downwards of inflation or flatline in which we expect. But don't forget that February is the month where people begin to go back to the market. And this February in particular, we're talking about pre-fasting. We're talking about Lent for the Christians. And we're talking about Easter in April. So all of these things will play into the general level of prices in the next two months or two. I think that's very important to bear in mind. Also, we've seen the price of cocoa fall sharply, when I say sharply, to eight thousand, eight hundred dollars a ton, in spite of the fact that agricultors say that they cannot increase their supply this year. And that has an effect on our export spending expectation because we're expecting to earn about almost three billion dollars this year. If this price stays through, then we'll be getting only about two point three billion dollars, which is much better than what we used to have in the past where it's, every dollar counts in this, in this time, at this time.
All right, Mr. Rwanie, thank you so much for that update, especially on the prices of commodities. What do we expect in the coming days as the fasting season begins this weekend? The Chief Executive Officer of Financial Derivatives Company, Mr. Bismakroani, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Well, another very hot issue in Nigeria now is the tax reforms. The Senate has started a two-day public hearing on the tax reform. We know that the lawmakers have been busy on it since before the last year ended. And we've seen compromise from the politicians, that's mostly the governors. And then we hope to have all of the bureaucracy and processes ended before the end of the first half of the year, where promised that implementation will start in the second half of this year. So let's find out now from the tax masters. I don't know what to call them. Mr. Samuel Agbelui is the President of CITN, Chastet Institute of Taxation of Nigeria, joins us virtually now to tell us what is going on, what we can expect from this public hearing organized by the Senate on the tax reforms and what else could come. Good morning, sir, and thank you for joining us.
Good morning, and many thanks for having me this morning.
Great. So what should we expect from this public hearing? It looks like a lot of work has been done so far. What else can we expect?
Okay, I agree that not a work has been done even with the B before it was sent to the National Assembly. And so you agree with me, the members of the National Assembly are our representative. So they have the constitutional rights to go through any B before it can be passed into law. And that is the stage where we are now. And you also, you can recall that I was in your station on a few occasions in the past, where CITN endorsed the B as a major climate changer for our, to sanitize our task space and improve our economic growth. That we stand, we stand with those comments, the institute stands with those comments. But of course, there's no perfect document anywhere. We expect the public hearing that started yesterday to add value to what we have in the National Assembly. So that at the end of the day, by the time the National Assembly, both at the Senate and the House of Lords, by the time they are done, they incorporate necessary documents that will add value to the B, then they can send to the productive assets. It is our desire and expectation that by the time this B comes into operation, it will help in improving the tax revenue in the country, not only in terms of revenue, but even as administrative practice, so that all those impediments and those things that are giving everybody headache within the task space have gone fairly low, if not fully eliminated.
So we know that the most controversial, I mean, I think it's safe to say, the most controversial part has been taken care of, you know, with the politicians and all of that. So what other sections of this reform bill can we expect to be prioritized in this public hearing?
Okay, thank you. The institute has also submitted a position. One of the things we believe we should pay attention to is to the, to ensure that the implementation. I'll give an example. The major headache I have not seen, I've been in task party for quite some time, I have not seen the federal revenue service collecting tax revenue or asking taxpayers to pay what is not in the law. I've not seen that. Most of the state internal revenue, they are also trying to comply with the law as far as possible. So we have the headache, the headache we actually have has to do with the non-state actors and possibly at the local government level, whereby all manners of taxes are introduced and people are being forced in an uncivilized manner to collect those taxes. This must stop, and this requires a lot of political will, particularly on the part of the governors. The governor must pay attention to this. I believe they are having their way in terms of the sharing formula is good. We supported this from day one. We supported the need for stakeholders to make their contribution and so that the B can be better, and that has been done. But the moment we get to the implementation stage, the governors will have a lot of work to do. We have it on record that most state governors, where they get to power, those who have supported them, either they are being seated away from the eye of the tax revenue offices or they even engage non-state actors, okay, in order to compensate you for the support you are giving me during the campaign, go to this part of the state, go and generate S revenue. Some non-state actor meet the political leaders at the state level and the local government. And they say to them, I can collect S amount of money from this local government for you. And they put the money in the course of the government. And the government say, okay, go ahead and collect. The way and manner does not matter to the government. We have this practical experience at the implementation level to ask us actually deal with about nine different types of taxes. It's an nuclear task, and we need to draw the attention of the state governors to this. Because once we all agree, and we're able to do nine, there will be sanity, there will be confidence in the system, people will believe more, and there will be more voluntary compliance. Once there's more voluntary compliance, of course, what the consequence of that will be increased revenue for the federal government, state and local government. So nobody benefits from chaotic situation. And we need to make this clear to the people and show the members of the National Assembly have their eyes on this. And we also want the National Assembly to look at the more into the professional aspect of tax strategies in the country. CITN has been here for quite some time, and we have done a lot. We have made a lot of recommendations to previous governments. We have supported this B from day one, and we are still supporting it. And so the place of the professionals in the implementation of this B, once they become at, must also be emphasized so that we can get the full benefit of what should come out of this.
All right, Mr. Agbelui, it does sound to me, especially in, you know, the first point that you raised, that it's not just about the law or what's written down, but more about the real power of politicians. Do you have any idea of how that can occur? Because you could have the law, beautiful document, but when it comes to the implementation, as you've noted, it becomes something else. Do you know how that can be regulated or enforced?
Well, thank you. When I appear on television like this, I don't like mentioning state. I don't like mentioning names so that it doesn't look as if one is biased. But we have a record and a fact as an institute. There are some states whereby once some big people in those states are not happy with the revenue authority, the Internal Revenue Service, we've had situations whereby some chairman of Internal Revenue Services in the state lost their job because they moved to collect taxes from some big people in the state. Now, when you shoot some people from paying their taxes and you ask the ordinary people on the street, the poor civil servant, I make my language using that word, the hardworking civil servant, who have no choice in it because the deduction will be made before they get their salary, you ask these people to pay. And the people who are the billionaires within your state, you are shooting them away from making their tax obligations. This is not the way to go. This is not the Nigeria of our dream. So it requires political will. You are the governor, you are a big man. You can always give money to whoever you want to give money to. But ask them to go and comply with the law. Once they comply with the law, and people can see that everybody is paying, that is equity, then of course you pay according to your strength and your financial motive. So once we are able to do that, we see more compliance. Because what we have now is compliance issue. And that is one of the things that this B is trying to resolve. Once this is resolved, I tell you, Nigeria can pay more than three, four types of what we are getting. And once we get that, then we talk about advocacy again. Please kindly utilize whatever you have judicially for the people. The stakeholders must benefit. You must use this money, it must not be frittered in a way. We must not wake up every morning and keep on hearing the issue of corruption and how people are siphoning money outside of this country. Once we do this, of course, Nigeria will be great and we'll be proud of our country. That is what we expect. Any moment this B is signed into law. And to that extent, we recommend strongly political will. It's not enough to talk about division. The leaders at the sub-ten now must have sufficient political will. They must support, they need to support the various internal revenue services in their state. If you saw states, internal revenue services don't enjoy autonomy. Go and look, take a, take a look at those states that have given this power to their various state internal revenue service, autonomy in terms of finance and administration, meaning that the various state chairman, internal revenue chairman, can feed the salary of their workforce. They can employ whoever they want to employ, not necessarily from the state, but from across the country, good hands, and they can hire and fire. Once they do this, give them the latitude. They will generate revenue for you. By the moment you put land, a land peg in a square O, you are not going to get some of the various chairman in some of the states, they are just kind of political associates. And this is not the way to generate revenue. This is not the way to, you are not going to maximize the benefit embedded in this B if you add that, if you continue that way. So that is our recommendation. The attitude has to take, the political will must come up.
All right, Mr. Agbelui, thank you so much for telling us the stance of CITN on this tax reform, especially- on this tax reform, especially as the public hearing ends today. The Senate organized public hearings, the sixteenth president of CITN, that's a chartered institute of taxation of Nigeria. Mr. Samuel Agbeyi, thank you for your time.
Thank you for having me.
Let's take a break now. When we come back, we'll talk money, funding. That'll be our conversation after the break. Stay with us. We'll come back. It's still business morning on Channel Television. We're discussing funding now from the eyes of Baobab Nigeria. Then operating in Nigeria for fifteen years now, that would be in May. So we have the acting chief, chief executive officer of Baobab Nigeria, Eric Ntumbaa Bukasa, right here in the studio. Mr. Bukasa, good morning. Uh, is it too early to say congratulations? You're fifteen in Nigeria, um, in May.
We already in twenty twenty five and we started in twenty ten. So it's not too early to say congratulations.
All right. So congratulations to Baobab Nigeria. But how impactful have you been? You're in microfinance space in Nigeria. How impactful have you been, uh, fifteen years, a decade and a half in the country?
Yeah, uh, I can easily assess our impact, uh, through, uh, the magnitude of loans we disbursed in fifteen years. We are over three hundred and fifty billion naira disbursed to more than half a million Nigerians. Uh, and this has contributed also to formalize businesses that used to be, uh, uh, on the, on the verge of the formal sector, uh, enabling them to produce, uh, financial information, to access, uh, their first time credits and to access, uh, uh, best-in-class financial services that actually, uh, boosted the capacity, uh, to, to thrive. And we've seen, uh, these changes in the life of the people we serve. Because we have chosen to serve the unserved or the underserved. And, uh, we've seen people, uh, from markets in Kaduna to markets in Bodija, going from loans as low as ten thousand, now accessing loans of over a hundred and fifty million naira. So our impact can really be felt in the change, uh, it brought to the livelihood of, of people through access to finance, employment, uh, uh, income generation and, uh, uh, so many other aspects that have transformed the life of real people here in Nigeria over the last fifteen years.
Now, so what sectors would you say is your focus? Where, where is your interest in these lives you have transformed?
Uh, we are interested in any, uh, type of business activity, whether formal or informal. Because we, uh, have a spectrum that goes from SMEs that can access loans above two hundred million naira to, uh, very small scale businesses that could be informal businesses. And, uh, what we look at is actually, um, the capacity of our clients to, uh, generate, uh, income that can able, enable them to, uh, actually repay our loans. Uh, we believe that, uh, finance should not be a barrier to opportunity. People have ideas. People are really dynamic in Nigeria. We just want to come as a catalyst to make sure that they can actually access, uh, uh, their dreams. And we've been doing that quite effectively, uh, because, uh, we base our approach on three key pillars. Uh, accessibility, innovation and client centricity. So we really know the segments and the sectors in which we evolve. And it ranges from small, uh, agri businesses to services or to, to, to trade or small industries. We really do not have a focus in terms of sectors or segments. But, uh, when we see an opportunity to transform a life through finance, then we service it.
But in all of this, I mean, you're, you're still a business. The, the issue of bad debts, um, the request for collateral, because when you're dealing with small businesses, these are real, they are real factors. Um, how do you handle that to stay on top or to be, to stay as a sustainable business? You know, even though you're dealing with the small scale businesses?
Yeah, that's a very interesting question. And, uh, this was quite interesting to discover that small businesses, micro enterprises do not, uh, necessar- necessarily mean, uh, bad debts or, uh, low repayment, uh, uh, capacity. Uh, we have managed, uh, last year to disburse up to hundred billion naira. And we maintain a quality of portfolio with a portfolio, portfolio at risk, risk below two percent, which is, uh, above ninety eight percent of collection rate. Uh, I'm sure even corporate bankers will envy us for this type of quality. So intuitively, people may tend to think that small businesses are not paying, but, uh, experience is actually, uh, proving the contrary. They do pay and what's important is how you package, uh, the loan, how you package the overall relationship to make sure that you de-risk, uh, the business that you do. In terms of collateral, uh, we do not ask for collateral, uh, below a certain threshold because, uh, we want to maximize our outreach. And we know that collateral has always acted as a barrier, uh, for people to access finance. And we want to break, to break those barriers down. But, uh, above a certain, uh, uh, threshold and a certain level of formalization, yes, we start looking at collaterals, but different types of collaterals, uh, it can range from stocks, uh, up to, uh, maybe real estate. It depends. It depends of the mag- on the magnitude of the loan. But really, we do not see, uh, collateral. We don't want to see collateral as a, as a barrier, uh, preventing people to access finance and then access opportunity for a better life. We make sure that, uh, uh, our way of, uh, looking at, uh, the, the, the risk, the credit risk, uh, on this segment, uh, allows for people, uh, to access finance and thrive.
Hmm. And I, I think, uh, beyond the finance, you also give other supports for this, uh, to these businesses for sustenance.
Yes, uh, building our own, uh, uh, DNA is the fact that, uh, we help small businesses access their first financial information. Usually, if you want to become bankable, you need to have financial information. What we do is where most of the people are asking for a couple of years, uh, we help people build their first balance sheet and their first P and L with three to four months, uh, of financial records, basic financial records. Once a business has financial information and starts, uh, uh, having a, a transactional record with a bank like ours, then access to credit becomes possible. But beyond that, we also, uh, believe in the triple P approach, profit, people, planet. We make sure that, uh, we, through, uh, our social, uh, uh, corporate and social responsibility, we make sure that, uh, we impact the people beyond just, uh, making a profit or beyond just, uh, going for a, a credit transaction. And, uh, we have a strong focus on, uh, uh, young girls empowerment. Uh, and, uh, we also have a strong focus on, uh, green energy. Uh, this year or last year, we, uh, just helped a couple of, uh, widow register their children for, for school. More than a thousand widow and we, we do it quite consistently. We believe that it is important to give back the community and in doing so, we actually de-risk our own activity. Quite recently, we've launched also, uh, a free micro, uh, ins- health insurance pro- program with one of our partner to, to, to try and educate our people on the benefits of insurance. Usually when it comes to the cost, people are hesitant. So we told ourselves, no, let us dish out, uh, over a thousand free, uh, uh, micro health insurance plan that spend, that spend over six months. So as people get accustomed to it, maybe they will understand the need and the, the reality beyond, beyond insurance. So we have that, uh, social responsibility at the heart of our business. But to, uh, sustain it, we need to be able to be a thriving enterprise.
Exactly. You have to be a thriving business to be able to take all of that risk. And we know that, uh, you are Baobab Nigeria, but you don't just operate in Nigeria. You have, you have global companies, I think.
Yes, we, 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 we are a global company, uh, but with a strong focus on Sub-Saharan Africa. Uh, we are now present in seven countries. We used to be, uh, a bit larger, but we have refocused our activity on Sub-Saharan Africa. Uh, we are present in Francophone West Africa, uh, in the DRC, in Madagascar. Uh, we are, uh, we are headquartered in Paris, France. And, uh, we really have a plan to expand throughout Sub-Saharan Africa, making sure that we actually contribute to, uh, lift people out of poverty. The group has been in existence for twenty years. And, uh, last year alone, we've disbursed above two billion euros of small loans. So that has a direct impact on the real economies of all these countries, including Nigeria.
Hmm. Interesting. And, um, uh, how do people reach out to you? You have an app, I, I, I think, or you know, how do, how is, how are you accessed?
Okay, accessibility is at the core of our, of our strategy. Uh, we have a dual approach. We, uh, define ourselves as a digital, uh, bank. Meaning that we are present physically. We've got a footprint of thirty-eight branches across sixteen states plus the FCT. And, uh, we also have, uh, uh, to maximize our outreach, we have developed digital ways and digital means to reach, uh, our people and to reach our clients. So, uh, you can, uh, access, uh, to our services through apps. We have one app that we've developed last year that is quite buzzing, uh, these days.
What's it called? Jolof Plus?
Jolof Plus.
It's, I hope it's Nigerian Jolof and not Ghanaian Jolof.
Nigerian for sure. Jolof Plus, uh, and it's.
So it's why it's on Android or where is?
Uh, it's on Android, it's on iOS. Uh, you can go on any of the downloading platform and have it on your phone. It's, uh, seamless self-onboarding and you can find it either via transfer, using card, uh, it's quite, it's quite user-friendly. And, uh, what has been interesting is the response of the market to this. Uh, it is a, uh, digital saving tool, digital saving app. Uh, we managed to have over forty thousand clients in less than six months. And in less than a year, we've reached over six billion of savings. So it shows that there is a need, people want to save. You just need to make sure that you bring convenience and you remove, uh, barriers like transport, distance, branch opening hours. So we believe that the combination of our physical presence and our footprint, uh, in, uh, thirty-eight branches and we will grow that network plus our digital, uh, 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 lever to reach more people, people whether they are in, uh, the north, the south or anywhere in Nigeria, uh, makes us a relevant partner for, uh, uh, MSMEs.
Hmm. So for this Jolof, uh, savings app, individuals do not need to go to your physical office.
No.
They can start and end the process with their savings on the app.
End to end, from the comfort of their home or the office.
Wow. Interesting. All right. Uh, well, once again, congratulations, fifteen years in existence in Nigeria. We wish you the best more and that, uh, you know, you will touch more lives, especially the small businesses.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right. So that's, uh, the acting chief executive officer of Baobab Nigeria, Mr. Eric Ntumbaa Bukasa. And they're celebrating fifteen years in Nigeria. Let's take a break now. When we come back, we'll head to the global scene, tell you what's happening in Asia, in China, in the United States, right here on Business Morning. Stay with us. Welcome back. It's still business morning and we're heading to the global scene with Laddie Williams. I know President Trump has to be in the news.
Yes, he's in the news again and he's already, you know, rattling some economies and markets, um, at this time.
Yeah, we saw global oil also moving because of, yeah, Iran's sanction.
Maybe investors are looking for that excuse to take profit. And once they see the tariffs, they just, all right, let's take profit, get all dramatic. All right, let's get a check of what's playing out now. We see, um, Asian, um, currencies. They're mostly dipped, uh, today as investors exercising caution, you know, following President Donald Trump's, uh, confirmation of tariff plans. Um, we saw the US dollar index, that slipped by zero point one percent. That was during Asian trading after hitting a two-month low, um, in the previous session with the dollar index futures. Also experiencing a slight decline. The jitters also impacted Bitcoin dropping, uh, below ninety thousand dollars for the first time in a long time. Now we see Bank of Korea, they cut interest rates by twenty-five, um, basis points. It was widely anticipated rate cut, um, today seizing the opportunity created by easing political tensions to reignite its easing cycle. The central bank slashed its benchmark rate by twenty-five basis points to two point seven five percent, marking its third of such, uh, the third time is making such a move, you know, launching the easing campaign since, uh, late, um, twenty twenty-four. Then, uh, we see Indonesia and Apple, they've reached a deal to lift, uh, the iPhone sixteen ban. And, uh, that, that deal, you know, definitely is, has, uh, impacted, you know, iPhone sixteen sales, you know, in the country. Finally ending that tense five-month, you know, standoff. Uh, the agreement comes after Apple committed to increasing its investment in Indonesia to one billion dollars. A move that helped break the, um, umpas. The deal marks a significant step for both the tech giant and a Southeast Asian nation, paving the way for the new iPhone model to hit the market while bolstering Apple's presence in the region to other areas. Now, Unilever, um, CEO, his, uh, step down, that's Schumacher, uh, that's the, uh, CEO of Unilever PLC. The markets on Tuesday, um, unexpectedly got the announcement as Hane Schumacher, you know, stepping down. His departure affected May thirty-first, would pave the way for current CFO Fernando Fernandez to take the helm as a new CEO ushering in a new chapter for the consumer goods, um, giants. Then, uh, we see Tesla sales in, um, Europe. That's, uh, that's dropped in, um, January. Took a significant dip there as the electric vehicle giant, uh, faced mounting competition from Chinese rivals and a stronger push into the market by European manufacturers. Um, new car registrations in the EU, um, after on the UK, that plummeted by forty-five point two percent year on year, um, to just nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five units. Tesla's market share also, um, shrank to one percent, down from one point eight percent a year ago, according to the data from European Automobile Manufacturers Association that was released, um, today. All right. So, uh, to other artists, um, now in the market, we see, um, Elon Musk issued a stern warning to federal workers threatening to suspend those who haven't returned to the office by this week. This marks the latest directive in a series of cost-cutting measures led by, uh, the billionaire. Well, Kalu Ajai is a financial, um, expert. He joins me now, uh, from the US. Great to have you, Kalu. Good morning.
Hey, Laddie, how you doing? Good morning. Good to be here.
Uh, great to have you as always. So, uh, we're seeing Elon Musk there tearing through agencies, you know, looking for waste um, in, in the government. How you seeing the Department of Government, uh, efficiency, that's Doge? How you seeing their cut-cutting, uh, their cost-cutting measures so far?
Hmm. Well, it's a shock to the system. If you, if you understand America, the federal workers in America are the best paid workers, the most pampered workers really in America. I tell you the report, where one hundred and sixteen thousand federal workers are millionaires. This is just from salaries, you know, they, they belong to a union, they get paid a lot and they don't come to work. Physical work, they don't come to the office. So the way that, that Doge is trying to reduce the workforce is to say you have to come to work, knowing that many of them won't decide not to come to work. So that way they can get fired and not trigger a union strike or union response. So you're going to sell fire or sell, move yourself on the federal workforce. Since COVID, uh, Laddie, the federal workers have not been back in the office in Washington. I think it's for the Treasury Secretary, the latter was last week, he opened the door of the Treasury Building. This is since COVID, you know, it's unbelievable. Like the private guys go to work, the government guys are working from home. So that's the avenue they are using. If you can't go to work, they're going to get fired. I think Trump has said, send a message of a second term, the emails, I mean. If you don't respond to the emails, which shows you don't have a government's email or you don't check your email, they are going to get fired. They are looking to cut costs, really. That's what they're trying.
Well, I guess the, the government workers have been having a good, you know, since, um, COVID. But how do you think, you know, Musk's demand for federal workers, you know, to return to the office? How do you see that impacting the, you know, broader conversation about, um, remote work, you know, in the public sector?
Hmm. Well, I think the issue is that, I think there was a report also I read where it talked about what the government is paying for leases, office space, office lease, office power, and there's no one in them. So they want to justify the cost to that building. If you're not going to work in that building, they're going to sell or lease it out to the private sector. But for now, this looks like a way to get rid of many workers that would not come back, right? Remote work is good, but even the private sector is asking people to come back. JP Morgan is saying you must be back in the office. Lots of banks are saying back in the office. Because it breeds that togetherness, collaborative, um, idea sharing that you get when you are face-to-face to someone. So remote work seems to be, the, the CEOs don't like it, if I put it that way. And this is just the flag of it now, stepping to the update and saying, we want you back in the office or less, you know, you get the, the big boot, yeah.
All right. But, but generally, you know, what do you think other countries can learn from this, um, department at this time? You think maybe Nigeria should form NRG?
Yeah. I mean, where do you have us? You know, this is all, we had a Rassanyi report, right? And it's a whole idea, efficiency and cost savings. So it's not just to sack workers. Uh, Doge is looking at how can we streamline the government to make it more efficient? So they're looking at even the air traffic systems to bring it up to speed. America is very funny country. There's in nineteen forties social security systems. They, they've kept their files in paper in a mine. So like, what do I explain? Only ten thousand workers can retire every month because your personal files are. because your personal files are kept in paper in a mine and you can only retire as fast as the laborer can go. This is America that's put a guy on the moon using paper to keep personal files. So the efficiency is a lot. And if they can get the government um right-sized and to adopt more IT, then it can reduce the cost of the ring government services to Americans. That's the target, remember, they can really touch um entitlements. So if they make it more efficient, they can reduce the cost without touching entitlements.
All right, definitely. It's all about efficiency at this point. Government efficiency for that matter. Thank you so much, Kalu Ajay, as financial expert. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so any, yeah, I said Noge. I don't even know what that means, but yeah, I'm just trying to make a Nigerian version of Doge.
Inspiration, so perhaps if you keep saying it, it might just happen.
It might make sense at some point.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, Laddie, thank you so much. See you at one. So that's it on the program. Thank you so much for being a part of Business Morning today. Full package of business, that's what you get every morning at ten AM. We'll do another one tomorrow. I'm Emy John Mekwa.